One item on the agenda, discussion regarding the city's Norman infrastructure needs related to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority's access program.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a quick intro to why we're here this evening. About three weeks ago, we received a call from the city manager's office in City of Moore. Mr. Mitchell asked if we could meet to discuss the intersections at Indian Hills, 36th Northwest, which becomes Telephone Road in Moore. So, Mr. Sturz, Stevenson and I met with Mr. Mitchell and his team in Moore, and he shared with us that they had received a communication regarding the design status of the east-west corridor of the turnpike and its relation to that big intersection in Indian Hills, 36th Northwest and Telephone Road. They talked about what Moore might choose to do in terms of preparation for the project, and their request was, you know, what were we working on on our side of Indian Hills? And what that all might look like when it comes together. Within a few days, we received a phone call from the Turnpike Authority, and they requested a meeting to have a very similar conversation about their design efforts on the east-west corridor from Newcastle all the way out to 48th Northeast generically. And I believe that's where Mr. Sturz and Stevenson's presentation begins.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you for being here tonight to talk about this. Scott Sturz, the Director of Public Works. This is kind of a twofold meeting, one to bring you up to date on what we know about the latest turnpike information, and then also to talk about some further steps and future steps that have been requested of us to be able to move forward on this project. So to start off, I just kind of want to quick history of the OTA. Back in December of 2021 is when they first announced publicly the Access Oklahoma Program. Not a lot of detail at that point, just some pictures up on the board. That moved forward into Moore's work, and more presentations that included more information. But the Access Oklahoma is $5 billion, and it does include both the alignments through Norman that we'll be discussing tonight. Then in March 22, 2022, Norman passed a resolution opposing the turnpikes through Norman. And if you look down through there, in June of 2022, OTA authorized the bonds. Then the council, the bond oversight, gave conditional approval, a resolution pending court actions pending at that time that had been brought out from Norman. Then September 6, 2022, Norman filed a brief protesting legislative authorization of the south extension. I'll clarify which ones those are as we move forward here. Then October 10, 2022, the state Supreme Court assumed jurisdiction of the OTA bond issuance application. And then August 1, 2023, was when the Supreme Court of Oklahoma ruled that OTA had statutory authority to build a new turnpike that included an Access Oklahoma. So at that point, all the lawsuits that were pending had been concluded, and the OTA began work back on the entire program. There are projects underway on the Turner Turnpike as well as up in the Tulsa area that are part of the Access Oklahoma, so other things are already underway and under design at this point.
What, the water can resolve whatever's going on?
Yeah.
Extra noise?
Yes.
Yeah. Can we close the door?
Sure.
Now we can close it.
I think we're going to ask friends to be able to close the echo.
The delays aren't it?
Thank you.
So OTA did request a meeting from staff. So on July 15, 2024, Daryl Piles, Hannah Stevenson, myself attended a meeting at the OTA. They had members of the OTA staff as well as members of PO, which are their project managers for Access Oklahoma, who were in attendance at that meeting. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of good, robust discussion, a lot of back and forth. Some of the things that were discussed, and I'll be going into more detail over a lot of these items as we move forward, was where are they at with the current design and what's going on with the east-west corridor connector, which is what they call EWC, and that is the part that goes across Indian Hills and then goes up and ties into Kickapoo. So as I use that throughout, that's kind of gives you an understanding of what that is. They had a lot of questions about Norman's plans were, especially what we were planning to do with our roadways to connect to the north at Indian Hills and further, so that they could get an idea of what they needed to incorporate into their plans. There was also a lot of discussion about what would Norman like to see, what are the things that we would need. So we had a lot of discussion about that and a lot of good back and forth. And then also, they gave us a little bit of an update on project status and timeline. So the map that you see there at the bottom is actually directly from Access Oklahoma. The information that we discussed that day was all directly from the Access Oklahoma webpage, so we did not see any direct plans or any other information than what I'm going to share here with you today. But the yellow is what is currently under design and what they're currently working on, and that's going to be done in phases, and I'll be talking through the sections of the following slides. And blue is what is currently under study and will be future design work will be completed. So just so you understand what the colors mean there on that map. So to kind of start breaking it down with this a little more detail, I want to start out, look at this east-west connector. This is the current project, what you see on the screen right now, basically beginning there at I-44 at Newcastle, coming across through Norman, across I-35, and terminating, I'm going to call it 24th Avenue Northwest. I think it's a little bit give or take on that right now, those plans are still in design. Those plans are approaching 60% plans for the whole corridor in this area. And again, I just wanted to point out that Access Oklahoma is where all these drawings come from. But as you look there, I want to point out a couple of key items. As you come out of Newcastle and you come to a point that there begins a bridge, that bridge structure will span all the way over the Canadian River and the Canadian River floodplain, across the 10-mile flats or parts of it, and it will be a 7,000-foot-long bridge. It will be the longest bridge in Oklahoma, as we enter impressive sights to see. And then I went ahead and pointed out there, 72nd Street, or second, sorry, 72nd Avenue Northwest is actually our city limits. I've got that pointed out there just so you can kind of see what is in our city limits and what is not. So to focus in a little bit more on what we're talking about within the city limits, this is kind of a little blow-up, goes a little bit further over to 72nd, but this was kind of the most pertinent information. This is what we're calling Phase 1 internally. That's not what they're calling it, so don't call it that. They're asking about Phase 1. That's just for me to keep it all straight and keep us in-house discussing it well. The first thing I want to point out is that they do have access points called at 60th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest, and you can kind of see those, where you can see the vertical lines going north and south. Then also, kind of what we would request as part of our future plans moving forward would be one-way frontage roads. We just want to see those all the way from 60th Avenue Northwest all the way over to 48th Avenue Northeast, and that'd be kind of the extent of the urban area, if you want to call it that. But with this project, it would end in or around 24th Avenue Northwest.
So Scott, just when we talk about what that service road or frontage road may serve in that context of the efforts underway by our comprehensive land use plan volunteers, we're looking for residential density opportunities so we can ensure our growth stays in between the 48s. So service roads or frontage roads in between the 48s do provide that opportunity for transit-oriented development, higher densities, because the frontage roads would provide that access to that future turnpike. So when, you know, why would, why are frontage roads important? They are important if the goal is to achieve high-density residential development up against our northern boundary at Indian Hills.
Scott, is that lower frontage road Indian Hills Road?
Yes, it is. That's how it's currently laid out, and as you'll see once we get on the other side of I-35, it does switch toward the north service road would be Indian Hills Road, so we move further down to Norman. And you can see that, it's very clear on the, where that occurs on the drawings. A lot of discussion that we had about the frontage roads was two-lane in east direction, curb and gutter, modern storm sewer, all the items that you'd expect to see in a normal urbanized area. There's even discussion about the type of inlets, so it was a good discussion. Also, so you'll have 60th and 36th, which will be interchanges, if you will, but also 48th will go through, so it will not be terminated, will go under, it'll be an overpass at 48. But you'll be able to get off 60th or 36th and get to 48, so it's only a mile apart. And then some of the other items I want to point out is we're also asking for 36th Avenue Northwest to be constructed to Norman's current design.
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to derail the presentation too much, but while we're on topic of one-way frontage roads, was the discussion at all had about who was going to pay for those?
So at this point, the turnpike OTA is willing to do that, they return them over to us, just like I-35, and they'd be our maintenance in the future. So in this case, we'd be picking up two lanes of traffic on the north side through this area. I appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely. The interchanges at all three of these roadways will be five-lane? Yes, sir.
On that same note, so we'd be, they'd be constructing multiple miles of frontage road that the city would then have to take over maintaining, paying to maintain forever?
Yes.
In our northern city limit line, basically both directions of the frontage would be in Norman's city limits, because the city limit line does go quarter-mile north of Indian Hills.
Goes a half-mile through this area and then further on the other side of I-35 that drops down toward is Indian Hills Road.
And then the front, those frontage roads, they go across I-35 also?
I will be getting to that, but yes, they have committed to taking them across I-35.
So there'd be no disruption?
Correct.
Getting around.
What is the cost on something that, look like for that, if you're taking over those two lanes of traffic? Is it mowing? Is it?
There would probably be, those details aren't worked out yet. I don't know exactly where that maintenance would switch along I-35, I-35 corridor. ODOT maintains a portion, then where the fence is, we take over and go to the other side. So we haven't exactly set those boundaries yet, that'd be future discussions that would be had. And as far as the cost, it'd be the cost of mowing, and then also any, anytime we had to go out there and do some road repair. Again, we had a four-lane Indian Hills section already proposed in the 2019 bond program, so this would be the same amount of lane miles we would be taking over anyways through this section.
I was just curious, I know it's like hard with all the details in the air, but just like, do you foresee, you know, 3% increase to public works or?
I would not even expect to be that much, no.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're only talking a few miles of service road. When you look at the, you know, 700-lane miles we already have in Norman, it's not passable.
Would there be a way to kind of tally, though, as we go through all of these proposed? Well, I mean, we're not going to be at that, I'm kind of curious, like, what this adds to our budget overall?
So, Your Honor, there's, this is why we have these conversations, the thought, and maybe we look at it differently. We have development on the south side, you can see the neighborhoods, and how those neighborhoods are designed. If you think about a similar road layout on the other side, the other side of Indian Hills, there's a lot of plating that councils approved on that side for housing in various densities. To be able to design those neighborhoods and those communities where there isn't a whole lot left that winds up being the public's to maintain, but could be part of the developments to maintain, curb gutter, sidewalk, you know, block wall, main entrance into neighborhoods, I think through design, we could really reduce what that long-term maintenance obligation would leave for us.
Because what we have on Rock Creek now, that there aren't gutters, there aren't all those things, so it'd be that mowing in a normal section line road, because they're older than the side road. I don't think it's going to bring out any large amount. It's going to be more, because they're going to have gutters, and we're going to have to sweeten them and things like that. I don't think it's a lot.
Yeah, I don't expect it for this section, for it to be minimal increase in cost. As I said, we're already proposing a four-lane section for it anyways. So it'd be, what we'd be maintaining if we took it over?
Just to clarify that, the widening of Indian Hill Road is only from 48th to I-35?
No, that's correct, that's what I'm saying.
Just a mile and a half, but we're talking about new frontage roads that go all the way across the north side of the city?
To 48th Northeast, that's what, in this section, what I'm saying is it would be minimal, there would be some.
This section, yeah, but overall, we're looking at several miles of new, new roads of the city Norman will have to maintain once OTA does that.
Which is no different than anytime we have a new subdivision and new roads are built and we take over and maintain them. So that's pretty standard for any new development that we see, if you look at this as a development. This was a residential subdivision, they build the roads and we take them over. So it's very similar to what we do with any development or any big commercial or industrial development, they build it, we help, we maintain it perpetuity.
If we didn't have the voter-approved street maintenance bond, would we be able to afford to maintain all these roads that we have?
So that bond really goes down to being into the neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Doesn't really maintain roads such as this. We could, I don't really be at the level that we do now. We're starting to get to a point now where we're really seeing most of our neighborhood streets, there are still some that need a lot of work, we're really starting to see ourselves starting to catch up. We're seeing ourselves, I think that when you, when you look at other communities, Central Oklahoma and around Oklahoma, I think that our, we do a lot more in our neighborhoods than most any other communities do because of that street maintenance bond.
So, and Councilmember Holman, to that point, I think it's important to recognize, council approves road design standards. So if a developer's going to build a subdivision, he builds a road up to our standards, or we're not, we're not taking ownership of it, so we know what we're dealing. In this particular scenario, same thing, we would deliver design criteria to say, build these frontage roads that meet our usual design criteria, it would be a road like we would build if we were going to build ourselves.
Sure. My point is just that through the voter-approved street maintenance bond, as a city, we have to take out debt, millions of dollars in debt to pay for maintenance of all these subdivision streets that we've, that developers have built over the years, and new streets like this potentially. So just making the point that we can build more infrastructure, and we have to keep taking debt out to try to pay for maintaining it forever. So how sustainable is that from a financial standpoint for us and cities across the country? So just thinking about, yeah, if we're going to have several miles of new frontage roads on two sides to be built, how do we afford to maintain those frontage roads forever? Just like, how do we afford to maintain all the neighborhood streets in these areas?
Yep, and I think the math, and that's an excellent math problem, the thought of higher-density development on the north side of this drawing, and what that same millage rate would generate applied to, I have no idea how many potential residential units could line both sides of the frontage road, but it is, that's a very good math problem for us to be able to try to drill down into what, what would the same millage rate generate in maintenance, and does it meet or exceed the cost of maintaining those new roads?
And definitely the more dense it is, the more able it is to pay for itself without debt having to be taken.
Absolutely. Thank you.
How many miles are going through Norman?
I haven't calculated the miles.
Wow. Why not? So if it's 10 miles in four lanes in each mile, that's 5.6% increase or 5.7% increase the number of lane miles that we have to maintain per road. So it's not under 3%. It's almost twice.
But for this section, we've got a large, it's already going to be expanded to four-lane current projects, and I'm saying this section, I'm not, I'm not talking the whole, this section, we've got, like Councilmember said, about a mile and a half, it would be improved to four-lane. We don't know what we'd do beyond that to 60th. I think in the future, we would take that all the way to 60th. Four-lane, it's just not in the current, current bond. So in this section, and I'm, you know, looking at this, I'm saying in this section, it'd be much less than 3%.
If there's a one and a half mile stretch that we're planning on making four lanes, then, okay, 4.9% increase to our number of lane miles that we have to maintain.
In this area, I'm looking at overall throughout the city, and overall throughout the city, it's percentages wise. I understood the question would be, what will the overall budget be for the city of Norman increase, not what would the increase be for this section in overall? So it's way less than 3% overall in this section, it may go up. But again, they're going to be building a brand-new road, I would expect the life cycle on that to be 20 years. So we're looking at 20 years, and right now, we'd probably be doing maintenance out there on that section anyways. So you really start getting to some weird balancing act.
So 700-lane miles is just what's pictured?
No, no, that's.
That's citywide, the whole citywide.
Yeah, and I'd do a number out there, I don't know that that number's actually 100% accurate.
So if we're adding 34-lane miles to a system that's 700-lane miles large, that's 4.9% increase.
But again, none of the turnpike would be our responsibility, that would all be OTA responsibility. In this case, it would be adding, you know, like you said, that it'd be a less distance, we're only adding two new lanes for a portion of that.
So you're going to have those four lanes as two of them being?
Well, there's two existing, so we're only adding two additional lanes.
Okay.
And part of that's going to be in the city, along the city of Moore, or incorporated on the other side.
All right, so that's about 2%. It's still not insignificant.
No, the question was, what would be the increase in budget? I'm saying the budget increase would be less than 3% immediately. I didn't, that, that was the question in the response. So the math of that isn't what I was responding to.
All right, so the council knows, because you have looked, it's about 2, 2.5%.
So the frontage road that we're discussing, it would be two lanes, 12-foot wide each. So that was the negotiation, that way we're minimizing, we don't want to be too wide, we want it to be safe. So I was discussing the 36th Avenue, we want to make sure that it's constructed to the standard that we're building to, which would be five lanes at this location, plus the 10-foot multi-multi path, we want to make sure the multi-multi path is included in there, because that's part of an overall master plan to get from Norman through Moore or through Oklahoma City all the way to Edmond. I haven't seen the whole map, but it sounds really cool. So we had that, and they've agreed to that. And then the other thing that we've requested is to look at green infrastructure to protect our water quality, because we do want to protect our water quality. I know that there's a lot of discussion about wetlands, I think wetlands is one tool in the tool chest, I think there's a lot of other items that can be used very successfully that may be more effective and may be better and less maintenance, so I don't want to restrict it to wetlands. I want to make sure that we keep it open to more opportunities to come and get.
And on that slide, you, I asked Mr. Sturz, so I hear all kinds of things about the Little River, but where can I see the Little River? And it's really hard at grade to know when you're standing over the Little River, but from the aerial, you can kind of recognize that darker green area heading from the left side of the screen over to the right, and it's, it's more visible east of I-35. And the concept of wetlands, Mr. Chris Mattingly in Utilities had kind of coined that phrase that, you know, where's an opportunity we could invest in wetlands, even from a Norman next project to develop ecotourism along the north side of Lake Thunderbird. But in one of the AMES subcommittee meetings, they had described an opportunity to really turn the Little River into an amenity in a linear wetlands design concept. And this is where accountants don't really grab the, the visual impact of what that could be in terms of amenities to high-density transit-oriented development along the Little River, you know, with the opportunity to have that improved in a way that improves water quality and provides really an interesting focal point that people would say, yeah, I want to live next to that feature along Norman's northern boundary.
Roadways, that's suggesting we use our wetlands as a filter?
They are very effective for that, they can be, they've been shown to help in treatment. They obviously are very well-known for removing nitrogen, phosphorus, and total suspended solids, and there are studies that are being shown that other pollutants are very easily removed through wetlands because of the, the structure of it, but also just giving it any opportunity for natural attenuation for any containment field dropped out. Anytime we can slow the pace of that water, get it slowed down. There's lots of other ideas that are out there that could be proposed. It just gives more opportunities for more contact with grass, if you're using a grass soil instead of utilizing a pipe, you know, don't want to use, I'm not a, I don't really like concrete plumes, I like to see grass plumes, because it, because the grass gets contact time. Aeration, it also increases aeration, aeration can help remove contaminants depending on what contaminants you're looking at. So I do think that anything we can do that's green infrastructure, that increases our, our contact time, our aeration slows down our flows, is going to help remove any contaminant that we can find in any of our water systems from any of our, any potential sources.
Have we done environmental impact studies on that area?
They are currently doing studies.
So you don't know? Okay. Can you continue?
Well, but we don't have any studies saying that it will impact either, so we're in the middle on that. So studies are being conducted, and we're saying that we want to get out ahead of that. The turnpike is also very, they've already reached out and had conversations with the SUGM CD, Bureau of Reclamation, and they've already committed that anything that they do, they will work with both of those groups, as well as the city of Norman and the other city they're passing through, to try to do things that will help benefit water quality and obviously wetlands. Because they are going to probably disturb some wetlands going through here, that's just fact, there's wetlands in this corridor, and they will have to do mitigation of those wetlands with the Corps of Engineers under a federal permit. And typically, those wetland mitigation projects are not one-for-one, they're usually two-to-one, or it really depends on how much you're doing. There is the opportunity, you can do wetland banks and take it elsewhere, but they really want to try to be true to the watershed, and stay in the watershed and treat it within the watershed.
Okay, so the answer is we don't know?
Studies are ongoing.
We don't know. Go ahead.
We can, I will concede, we don't know at this point. So the east-west connector, I want to kind of point out the interchange there at Indian Hills and I-35, just so if anybody hasn't heard me say it before, there's a list of worst engineering feats in the United States, and this interchange was on the list at one point, I'm really not proud of that fact. But when this gets full build-out, it will be five levels high. So you can imagine some of those giant ones in Dallas. In fact, the picture there is actually a George W. Bush turnpike to Dallas, Texas. This would have the same kind of flow and movement, so you'd see something similar to that.
Good, any others?
But this won't all be completed upfront, because the traffic volume won't be there and the need won't be there to begin with. For example, when this first phase is built, there won't be a turnpike going to the east continuing onto I-40, there's no need to build every interchange necessary for that and have it dead-end. So that, you'd start seeing those come online as extended east. As traffic picked up, they may start adding new slip ramps and new opportunities so that they can keep the traffic flow moving appropriately through there. So this isn't what you're going to see in the first phase, this would be long-term, I can't tell you when it may all get built out that way. And the other thing that I find very interesting is that the bridge that goes to the east, as you're coming off of that, you go over the train tracks, you go over the Little River, and then you continue over a floodplain, and then there's a flooding issue at 24th, and they are right now extending that bridge and trying to determine where it's going to terminate, but it will cover most of those areas to not be impacting the floodplain, the waterway, or the train tracks.
Councilman? So I'm willing to accept a certain level of a turnpike in this town, because it sounds like it's being forced on us, and we don't have much choice. However, this gives me so much heartburn that I don't even really have a response for it. If we're going to negotiate something, I want to negotiate this out of our town, because I, this is my story, personally, so I'm trying to get that out there.
I'm curious about the train tracks part of the bridge, is that already existing or do you look like, do, where are the train tracks?
So the train tracks are direct, they're east of the interstate, so they're right there, so once you use that, that would go with the soft, but it currently is just a normal railroad crossing at great, so this would give us a great separation.
And this wouldn't be like tying into OTA in the future or anything?
It would not.
Okay, just to get that clear. Okay, feel the same way about this, but, you know. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear on this, so as this interacts with I-35, and it's going to phase in different projects as this expands, so we're going to continually be seeing doubt, there's really no way to avoid delays and things on I-35 if it's continually taking new construction under, through this project to be an overpass and be turned into a pipe neck?
I don't really have a direct answer for that, because that's dependent on the phasing of the planning and how they construct it. They may, I know, you know, if. They may, I know, you know, a lot of times you'll see that sometimes I'll go ahead and do some of those big pillars in advance so they don't have to be out there in the middle as much instead of having to shut down as long as any lanes. So I, I just, that's going to depend a lot on the construction and the phasing of the projects.
I'm going to agree with Matt that I just, that I can't imagine that being the movement and I really hope that we're able to work around that and get rid of it.
I think that a lot of what makes it look more complicated is that there's frontage roads in all four directions. If you took those off, it would look just like what's, what's going to be going in I-240 right now. And I think we can all admit that that has been a disaster for a long time. And so it's just the modern interchange. But I think it's when you start adding in, a lot of what you see there is those, making sure that those frontage roads function and go across the interstate as you, as you had mentioned, or go under and continue north execution.
So though in this design, if someone is getting off of I-35, will they be able to access 36th Avenue directly? So the big vacant property that's there that could be developed, is that property losing access to I-35 directly because of the interchange?
I don't, I don't think so, but again, with that same final plans, I mean, this is a line drawing. It's hard to see that directly. But, you know, I mean, if you've ever gotten off at I-35 with George W. Bush Turnpike, you can get off, you can get onto the frontage road, you can go right down the frontage road to, to access. All the properties are right there. It just depends, you know, a lot of times as you get off, you've got George W. Bush Turnpike this way, you know, whatever roadway this way. And so that will all be laid out, but without seeing final details and final design, I'm, but I don't think there's any intent.
So, okay, Councilmember, we did share that, that reality that when we look at commercial viability, that is really, really a valuable piece in Norman's portfolio available retail space and we can't lose access to it or, you know, we just devalue that particular parcel and we really need the acreage available. There are just very few pieces that big for future commercial development in Norman. So that's, it's mission critical to make sure access is maintained.
I agree, and that's one of the things that's given me the same kind of hesitation about that design is, is it closing off access to one of the more valued pieces of commercial space left in Norman on I-35? And then agreeing with my colleagues too about just, I like that you mentioned that it was one of the worst designs or worst projects ever. But yet we keep doing them here and everywhere else around the country. And we haven't been able to find some other way to address transportation than doing these massive things. And I can recall this being built, that interchange going to Dallas as a kid and growing up. And just every time you go down there once a year or so, you see the pillars up and the flyovers. I know there's one in Tulsa too that people talk about as being a ghost, ghost freeway, ghost turnpike where the pillars and everything were built, but then they were never connected to anything and there's apparently no plan to currently connect it to anything. And so.
It was currently either in design or in construction.
Well, they've been there for years, more than a decade.
I just drove past them today and they were there.
They're still there. So, Councilmember, this, this, you know, one of those conversations to be had, an initial thought is, do those frontage roads fly over I-35? The current plan says yes. If that frontage, if Indian Hills flies right over as a frontage road across I-35, the railroad tracks and the Little River, is it more important for that connectivity or more important to cut that whole top of the profile off of this structure? So it could just boil down to council's preference. If it is, if it is assumed that council's preference is all the frontage roads in all directions go over or under the turnpike, we wind up with a very large deck. If, if the deck height is the primary concern, get that down to a minimum. It may be achieved, but it may mean the frontage road stop at I-35 and stop at the turnpike. So just, those are puzzle pieces and I think they're wonderful conversations that absolutely need to be worked through and you'll get to, you know, still your preference in whatever that ultimate deck structure looks like.
I think the issue with that, as you mentioned, is if we don't, if it doesn't do that, then you'd be forcing people to get onto a turnpike just to get across to the other side or have to go a mile south, a mile across, you know, and make a pretty significant detour and you'd be cutting off access to property that already has access right now. And so, yeah, I think, I think if this happens, it would have to go across and connect that way. But, yeah, I just, it does seem out of place here.
So the OTAs said they're paying for the service roads from 48th to 40th. What about beyond 48th?
There would be no, currently there's no plans for service roads beyond 48th. They would terminate at that point.
Really? So there will no longer be Indian Hills alternative beyond 48th?
I'd have to, when we get there, I've got that here in a moment and we can look at that further.
All right.
I don't think that the intent is to get rid of it because I don't think the alignment quite does that. I'd have to, we just need to look back closer. And here you can see this is going further. Basically you've got 24th Avenue Northwest there on the left side and going over to about a half-mile past 24th Northeast over on the right side. This is also currently under design, a little behind in the design schedule because they want to get I-35 to I-44 completed first. Access points on this section would be 12th Avenue Northwest, 12th Avenue Northeast, and 48th Avenue Northeast. You can see the ramps there for that and the considerations that they have on that. You can see there on the right side where it does make the change toward the north frontage road becomes on the Indian Hills and the south frontage road is south of the line now. So that's kind of where that change happens. I know that there's some cemeteries and you need to avoid some other items there. So that's kind of where that makes that change. Again, our request would be the one-way frontage roads basically on this section, 24th Northwest over to 24th Northeast or a little past it, ultimately to 48th. Again, the 10-foot multimodal trail on the south side. There needs to be some discussion from us on where we want to terminate that at some point. At this point, I don't think it would need that level of detail that we will in the near future. And then again, green infrastructure to protect and look on water quality. So that's kind of the next section. And on this one, they're still going to have, anywhere there's an interchange, the roadway will go under. So there will be an overpass, there will be no roads cut off. They're still looking at five-lane sections through most of it. There are some of these that I really don't anticipate would ever be more than a three-lane section. Those are discussions we could have at a later date. We don't have to use all of it, we don't need it. I think most of you are pretty familiar with the roadways in this area and what they all look like. The last section that's currently under design is basically coming from where the Kikapu ends, coming south just into city limits, a little past 120th. This section is kind of interesting to me. I drew the Norman city limits in there. It goes out of city limits, into city limits, and out of city limits. So the city limit, it's not all within the city limits. Like I said, this is also currently under design. The access points in this section would be at 120th and 156th. Both of those interchanges are actually outside Norman city limits, but they would tie back into Norman city limits. This section does not have a frontage roads. And in this section, we just want to make sure that we're preserving our water quality and looking at stormwater quality measures like green infrastructure again.
And in that concept of frontage roads, frontage roads may be perceived as growth-inducing, you know, to make it more convenient for that access. And we recognize that was not council's desire to entice development east of 48th.
Do we know how many in the current yellow line plans, how many homes are impacted by this plan yet?
They don't yet because they, they're, they're not to the point they know how much right-of-way they actually need to acquire. So what's shown here is kind of the maximum, I think would be the worst-case scenario, but they are currently in that, but we don't know. We have, that information is not really shared with us.
At least 250. In just, in just this yellow line section of Norman.
Is that for the, all the turnpike area, just the East-West Connector?
The entire turnpike area is about six, over 600. There's that latest information on that. And so if we expand the frontage road, that means more land, it takes more space and potentially reduces more residences?
If you're looking at a 10-foot multimodal path, Mr. Sturz might have some insight as to how many more feet of right-of-way it takes to develop and maintain a 10-foot multimodal pathway. When the final drawing would be done, you'd be able to determine if that additional 10-foot multimodal pathway actually required an additional doorstep or rooftop to develop.
We become close to always sometimes it might be a decision. I don't see how that would necessarily make the difference.
So this is that section in the middle for the East-West Connector. You can see it's in blue. It's currently, this area is under study based upon the alignment of what they call the South Extension Turnpike, the SET. The, the way it was drawn initially goes through some of the Bureau of Reclamation land and they came to go through that Bureau of Reclamation land. So they're currently looking at where the best relocation of that is, moving it west. And that's, so that's under study now. So once that's done, this set of plans would start to be under construction or under design also by getting that started. You can see here, Councilmember, you had asked about Indian Hills. It actually continues, it's actually north of the turnpike and would continue. And I don't think that they'd be taking that out of service in any way because it actually dies a little bit south of it. So Indian Hills would be maintained.
So they're only replacing Indian Hills from 48th to 48th?
Well, 60th, 60th to 48th would be technically correct.
They're not replacing Indian Hills between 48th and 60th on either side?
Well, it starts at 60th on the west side and gets to 48th on the east side. It'll just depend, they're not, if they impact it, I'm sure that if they do damage it, they're going to repair that. But at this point, you know, again, we don't have plans for us to refer to. I'm just going off what I can see here. It's south of Indian Hills and so I don't know. And at one point it actually gets, I don't know what, 10, 12 miles away from it. So I don't know if they'd be replacing it that far out based upon this drawing that I'm looking at right now. But again, this is all on sketch, not design plans. So I kind of shared some timelines here.
This question formulated while we were on this slide. How long does it take for environmental studies to get done? I was seeing that they're underway and the design starts.
That's, it depends. That's not a question that has an answer. When we do an EPA study, which is maybe a little bit more detailed than this because it involves some other items that aren't included in this, those we typically figure take about a year, but that, part of that is the signatory period at the end and review by Department of Transportation. So, you know, they can take anywhere from a month to nine months. It really depends on the complexity and what they're looking at and what the details are. You know, when you're breaking it up in pieces like this, if you look at that first phase, the first phase may not have nearly as many environmental concerns as the second phase. And so the second phase takes longer because more field work involved. There's more environmental regulations they have to look into. So there's a lot of things that vary to give you a timeline on it. So to give a timeline, I would say anywhere from three months to nine months.
And it's got a, are its OTA, do they have to pass EPA standards?
They do where they intersect the federal highway system. And I don't, I don't know exactly what the radius is from that or what the distance away from that is, but that's something that we could certainly follow up on and ask.
So it will be the whole, what we're talking about right now with that little section, that messy interchange if I'm remembering correctly?
That would go through 40.
Okay.
Is that federal land?
The interstate is, yes. The interstate system is, is.
Interchange of Indian Hills and 36th. All right. But the rest of it's not going to, doesn't have to be studied for its environmental impact?
No, they are doing studies now. Studies underway, shown here for water bodies, wetlands, threatened endangered species, and cultural resources, which is historic and archaeological. Those four items are the bulk and almost the complete look at an EPA study.
Matt, yeah, because it can be a Clean Water Act, a study under Clean Water Act.
Absolutely.
Or something else that depends on what act you're talking about.
Right. And if you start impacting wetlands or waterways, you're getting to the Corps of Engineers and you've got to do EPA. So there's a lot of things that vary on what, what rules and regulations you have to really do.
It's just going to be reviewing the studies.
I should have followed up with that question. I didn't ask that question. We were told they'd be made available to us. I do know as far as the water bodies and wetlands, they committed to work with COMCD, which they can bring in federal stipulations on stuff that they review. And they will be very concerned with water quality at Lake Thunderbird and their watershed. So, you know, they'll be reviewing it also, but as far as who will be responsible for review, I have to, I can ask that question and get your answer for that.
Mine is based on kind of what you were commenting on. Do we know if this East-West Connector crosses the blue line?
Yes.
Are they requiring a higher level of study for those areas?
Yeah, because at that point, they'll be looking at floodplain, they'll be looking at, at 404 permitting, which is waters in the US. Yes, anywhere they're crossing, anything like that, they will have a higher, that'll be part of the study and that's what the water bodies and wetlands will be. They'll be doing wetland determinations. To do a proper oil determination, you pretty much need a botanist and a soil expert out there to really get it done properly. So they'll be bringing in and I, they've already got those contracted and those are underway.
That's been my understanding as well. Anytime you do a 404 permit, it's usually a 12 to 18-month process and it's very, very.
If you have to do an individual permit, that's absolutely correct. For transportation, there's a, there's a threshold limit that if you don't go over, you can actually get a nationwide permit. And that's what we do a lot here in Norman, like with our bridge projects. We can get a nationwide 404 permit. It just requires us to say, "Hey, we're going to be working with this area, but we're below this threshold." And that is so that they're not inundated with small projects. They can concentrate on the larger projects. However, we started looking at Nymouth Creek, I think we've been working on that for like 18 months.
Yes.
So an individual permit, and they can get very sticky. When we did the individual permit for Main Street, we had to do a lot more mitigation. For the, for the trees that were lost, we had to do a three-to-one or four-to-one replacement and we had to monitor that for 10 years, turning in tree surveys. So there's a lot that goes into, especially when you get to a 404 individual permit. And along with 404 permit, you also have to get a 401 permit, which is a water quality permit. So a lot goes into it. At a certain point, it starts getting very, very broad and a lot of, actually the other way, it's very detailed and very narrow, not very broad. Wrong, wrong direction there, I apologize. But there's a lot of, would go into any of those sensitive watersheds.
Well, in this context, you know, I'm, this is the one time I'm grateful for burdensome regulations. Yeah, the more the better.
We are fortunate that Mr. Mattingly and his team and their cooperation with COMCD, we've got folks with knowledge, experience, and expertise who, you know, spend their free time making sure the water quality in Lake Thunderbird is not negatively impacted. So we'll have lots of eyeballs, independent of who OTA may forward those documents to. I can assure you that our staff and COMCD will review them in detail.
Scott, one other thing that was in there, you said they had contracted those out. So that's a third-party test lab, right?
Or a third-party consultant, yes. Yeah. It's difficult to do, I'm assuming that 99% sure they have. But they, they're just too large and you have to have very specialized staff for steady corridors of this length. When you start looking at, you know, threatened endangered species, that's a whole different realm and you have to have, you know, biologists. There's just a lot that goes into these when you really associate for this level and for, for this level of, of, you know, project, there's a lot that goes into it. And the, just the number of people involved can get very large. I was involved in one for spring in Hawaii. We had 40 or 50 people working on it from here as well as people in the field in Hawaii. So they can get very wide and very large.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so it's. Okay, so it's kind of go back to the current timelines. Fall of twenty twenty-four, we're expecting our sixty percent plans to be completed. So probably the next forty-five to sixty days. So and why that date is important, and this is what we're hearing from neighboring agencies who have experienced turnpike development right through the middle of town. When the plans are finalized at sixty percent, we won't have an opportunity to say, we need you to include X. After sixty percent design drawings, any additions we come up with, we pay for. So that's really kind of why we're here tonight, is we want to make sure that sixty percent design set of plans doesn't go forward without your fingerprints on it. Or anything we request after that, we pay for. Correct. And that includes, for example, if we weren't in the agreement that the frontage roads weren't put into the project, they wouldn't purchase the right-of-way to account for that. So we'd have to come back. If we decided we needed frontage roads, we'd have to purchase the right-of-way, do the design, do the construction. Same with the multimodal pathway. A pan- foot multimodal pathway east-west is important. We need to make sure that request is in prior to sixty percent. Or we'll build those on our own at some future date.
At our cost, at our taxpayer dollars.
Correct. So that's the sixty percent. We were told that sixty percent would be included in reviews. We start getting in there, learning more some of the details that are being requested tonight. But frankly, I just don't have answers for it because I haven't seen that detail yet. And then late or mid twenty twenty-five, we should see final plans on that first phase. Seeing construction beginning potentially late twenty twenty-five. With twenty twenty-seven, by the end of twenty seventeen, have the mainline open to traffic. What that means is the actual turn pipelines. There still may be some work on the frontage roads or some interchange items, but that actual connector would be open to traffic. And I, my comment there about no permits are required for Norman, I just found out that that is incorrect. They will be acquiring stormwater permits. So we will be issuing stormwater permits. And then there'll be discussion about floodplain permits also. So if they meet all the requirements, they, those will be approvable items.
Yes, sir. What would happen if the city of Norman said, we're not going to issue any of those?
So just like any permit, you've got a, an appeal process. I'd have to look at what happens with a stormwater permit. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can tell, talk about a floodplain permit. Goes to B O A, B O A Board of Adjustment. They can overturn that. If they don't, you can go to District Court and they can overturn it. At that point, it's a permit. Basically, if they met all the requirements of a floodplain permit and we denied it, it'd be pretty short, yeah, it'd be a pretty short ruling by a judge on that. With the floodplain permit, I am the floodplain administrator. So, you know, that goes through the committee. We do have two citizen committee members on there. I'll give them full information and sit down with them anymore. But if they met all the requirements, there'd really be no basis for denial.
And those requirements mean they have to show that they're.
No rise.
Not going to make the problem worse.
Correct. So kind of your main basis there is zero rise. So you're not going to, or very little, kind of, it's just minimal. Then you're not going to, so you're not going to impact any upstream or downstream property owners. And you're not going to raise the flood level at all. So that, that's the, to break it down to the simplest form, that's, that's your main requirement. The word protect.
Does it address runoff?
A floodplain permit does not.
So runoff pollution from this turnpike?
So they would have a stormwater permit. They would get that through utility department. And they would have a permit just like any developer or contractor out there just doing a construction project. So we would be doing our, however often our, I know they, they're pretty good at getting out there a couple of times a month, I think, or they've tried to. We'd probably put extra eyes on this one.
That's Michelle Lautenback and her team.
Yeah, Michelle Lautenback and her team. And then in addition, they told us that they do have a third party that totally runs their stormwater programs during construction. They take it pretty seriously. And talking to some other communities, we have, they had a lot of concerns with that. But that is something that we would definitely want to keep on top of. As far as we're concerned, we wouldn't be doing inspection of this necessarily. But we would treat it like any other project, just like we do when ODOT is building projects like James Garner for Norman. We're on it, we're checking it, we're taking care of it, we're the liaison with our community. So we would treat this the same, just be another developer in our, you know, in our, in our city. We'd be out there watching and trying to keep tabs on and help.
Not as concerned about it causing more flooding, even though that is a concern. Anytime there's a new bridge or a culvert or anything constructed, is there going to be an unintended or unforeseen impact negatively on an upstream or downstream property? But the runoff pollution from this has been my primary concern since the moment I saw it really was, if the lake is an impaired body of water, the Little River is the primary tributary into it, and we know that runoff pollution from urban areas of Norman, Moore, and South Oklahoma City is the cause of that pollution. How is a new highway with whatever debris may fall on it, whether it be trash or fluids from vehicles or blown-out tires or whatever it may be, and that is washed off the highway into the Little River, into the lake? And so that's been my main concern this whole time really about it is, how is this going to improve? How, how could it improve the situation and not make it worse? Just by the mere fact of its existence?
We totally agree with you on everything you just said. There's also a concern about during construction, about increased sediment loading coming into our streams and impacting Lake Thunderbird. We absolutely cannot have that. We don't want that on any project. This to me is no different than having a new subdivision built or us building a new roadway on, up here for James Garner. It's just another develop, I mean, in that sense, to me, it's just another development. And we've got to make sure that all those protocols are in place, that they have proper best management practices in place, it's being inspected properly. Like I said, we've heard that they do, they're doing a good job with this on other turnpike sections. But them having a third party that's watching it, it's not going to be in-house, and then us watching it in addition, that lessens the risk. I'm not going to tell you it goes away because if there's a four-inch rainstorm or kind of the mercy of mother nature, that, you know, that would be our main thing. And also, you know, getting things stabilized quickly, all those things. We totally agree. As staff, we're all on board with that. We want to make sure our water quality is protected during construction. Post-construction, that's what we're pushing for, green infrastructure. Green infrastructure will help remove all those contaminants and help give us a chance to get it treated before it gets into our water system. Buffer zones, wetlands, bioswells, retention. There's just so many different things that we can utilize to help us with that that are proven science to remove solids, remove trash, remove the fluids, the hydrocarbons, the phosphorus, the nitrogen, the total suspended solids. So that's why we, we as staff, if this turnpike's going to happen, we want to be at the table so we can have awareness and we can be a part of the team in reporting back to you as councilmen or citizens instead of having this just happen and us not have any, any real conversations about it. And that's my main concern at this point.
Sure, I appreciate that. So they would have to do certain mitigation. Green infrastructure anyway, we're asking them to do more than what they would.
So they will have to do wetland mitigation. If they impact a wetland, they'll have to mitigate it.
And we're asking them to do more than what?
We're asking if we can see some other things included that would help reduce. So specifically as it relates to, you know, this concept that I'd heard for the first time that come out of our aim steering committee. There are project opportunities on a scale this big where there is a mitigation bank and mitigation credits may exist. And developers could buy their way out of mitigation physical infrastructure by paying a fee into a bank. And then somebody else goes and competes for those dollars in the bank to actually do the work. That was not our request. Our request was, we believe there are design consultants who have already had eyes on the Little River, who actually understand wetland design, construction, what that looks like ten years from now and twenty years from now. And our request was to have them available to plug in with your civil engineers doing just, you know, road design work. Because I think they would tell you most of their design engineers are really good about drawing lines where pavement's going to be. But yeah, getting into the wetlands is probably a specialty that they're not maintaining. But to have a seat at the table with design consults for wetlands that council trusts, that's our request. We think the physical investment in those mitigation measures inside our city limits is worth a lot more to water quality than paying a fee into a mitigation bank. And a lot of these mitigation efforts are things that I think that we're going to be considering anyways as part of our Lake Thunderbird TMDL. We try to look at ways to clean it up. Wetlands have been mentioned a lot in that also. I will say that kind of, so on Highway Nine, in the last phase they did, there was an area where they wound up kind of widening Day Blue Creek. And we really kind of, it was the, ODOT, it was not OTA. And they kind of did a little more than what we thought should have been done. We worked with them. And a little wetlands has kind of developed itself in that area. We actually have stations up, down, upstream and downstream. We're actually seeing that the water downstream has actually gotten a higher water quality than that upstream. So we can see in our environment that small systems can make an impact.
I know we're really early on in discussion, but for Phase One, is there kind of an estimate on what the cost of wetlands, the multimodal path, the frontage roads, is that like in the millions for this project? And has OTA indicated what's too much, like they won't pay above five million in extra improvements?
I can tell you in our conversation with them, everything that we mentioned today, we may be asking a little more on some extra wetland or extra green infrastructure, but they were totally on board with the items that we discussed. And so they would absolutely consider that. And Your Honor, those are projects in the millions. And in a wetlands project conversation, we had many, many millions, thirty-plus. And in a five billion dollar program, that's a little piece. And if it's coming out of our water budget, it's a big giant piece.
Will we, when we get further down the way with this, like, fall, will we kind of have like a cost estimate for the things we're asking for?
We can ask if they can break some of those costs out for us or we can take a look at it and take a shot at what we know. These are things that we do in the Public Works Department quite frequently. But this is, you can tell this is since July fifteenth. We're coming to you quickly here. We can certainly come back with more information at a later date. We're happy to track down any information that people like us to try to track down.
Yeah, I'd be curious to get follow-up on the environmental part. What, if any, cost savings we're getting out of this by getting ahead of it? Those are just off the top of my mind. I'm also curious about that interchange we saw. And yeah, with what, I don't know if it's for this particular discussion, but like what could you develop in that area that actually made sense?
I think for us to bring alternatives, options, what does it mean if only the north-south frontage roads stay connected? Or what does it mean if only east? So I think all those alternatives, you can kind of walk your way through when it's all on the computer and, you know, and you can change some of the programs to see what that model looks like. And happy to carry that ball. And it just may boil down to what are your preferences in terms of that ultimate design?
One of the things about that stacking is a safe space. If you didn't stack them, you'd go out and that's more homes getting torn up and more and more. It's ugly in itself, but it works.
Yes, sir.
First, I just want to compare with some of my fellow councilors as far as the water quality. I mean, because we got all, a lot of emails about that. It's a huge concern. But that's why I sit down with you, I sit down with Mr. Mattingly, I sit down with Mr. Merton. And I think our consensus was, the more that we work with them, the more involved we are, the more we can mitigate any kind of initial pollution, any kind of initial runoff. You brought up the Highway Nine. When we widened it, when we widened it, it is true, if there was some excess runoff going into the lake, it was mainly phosphorus.
I had to say that.
But that is something that we were able to deal with. And if we would have worked with them early on, it's something that we probably could have mitigated altogether. And like you brought up, now that we've actually worked with them and created those wetlands, the water quality is better than it's ever been. It's, I don't know how much better, but it's better, it's better for the lake, it's better for drinking water with people. So the more we're involved, the more we work together. And overall, am I a fan of the turnpike? Do I want to see anybody lose their homes? Do I like eminent domain? No, I do not. I hate it. I hate it, I hate it. But if this is something that we're not going to be able to do anything about, and something that's going to come through regardless, we need to do everything in our power to make sure it's done right. And I just applaud what you're doing, so I appreciate it.
Before we get started. Chris, when we were talking about an impaired lake, are we talking about filtration or are we talking about pollution?
A little bit of both. I think dissolved oxygen.
Okay.
Chlorophyll A is over its numbers, which is probably due to phosphorus and nitrogen. And then turbidity, too much silt coming in.
Thank you, sir.
So yes, it's all those items. That's what the Lake Thunderbird TMDL addresses with the phosphorus, nitrogen, total suspended solids. Basically, to get down the core of the lake and also to reduce the turbidity in the lake.
So I think this has been asked, when or at the end, environmental study's going to be completed?
I did not get a date. We can follow up with them and we'll get those and we'll certainly move forward. I just didn't ask the date on completion of those.
Well, they're working on the plans without knowing the impact on the environment.
Well, at sixty percent plans, typically, that's, that's like the sixty to ninety jump is where you actually start doing that. So at this point, they're determining what the design is. They've got to have a rough design, like a sixty percent, to even know what is being impacted. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg and kind of an iterative approach. But you can't go out there and say, we're going to disturb this much of a creek until you know what the design is going over the creek. You don't have much wetlands until you know what you're designing to go over that wetlands. And then you work, then you work through that. And you see what you can do to mitigate or reduce. So really, you've got to have a certain level of design. I mean, for example, our NEPA process with, with ODOT, they won't even begin it until we turn in sixty percent plans because they have to have that level of plans to even be able to begin to assess what the impact is to the environment.
When do they start doing the environmental studies?
I, I'm sorry, I did not ask that question. There was a lot of discussion going on and I didn't get that detailed on the dates of those. But we will certainly ask that information.
Those things will take a year or more. They just started yesterday. And they find to begin construction before they're completed?
They won't begin construction, they can't begin construction before they're completed because if they have to get a four oh four permit or they have to get a water quality permit or they have wetland mitigation, they could not begin that until that's all in place. And I guess you start other sections, but if you don't know what's going to happen in that section, you don't really want to start investing in that. You may have to make changes to your plans, which is costly. So typically, no one will start until their environmental process is complete so they can make sure that they're building the right, right thing in the right place. The bridge span over the Canadian River, being the biggest bridge in Oklahoma, they'll spend a lot of time making sure they get that right and all the environmental documents are done long before they go out and try to poke a hole in the river bottom for that.
So for my own curiosity, let's just assume worst-case scenario, we get in an environmental disaster, something that we are not able to remedy in-house with our own budget. What, what are our options at that point? Is that grounds for a lawsuit? Would we pull Detroit, declare bankruptcy? Would be, just kind of like trying to game plan out, if there was something that were to happen that we weren't able to handle ourselves, are we protected?
And I'll look at Mr. Knighton in the back. In a, in a project of this magnitude, the recognition that, you know, they're looking at a budget of about five billion dollars. And if such an event were attributed to that project, at least we know the resources are there to actually mitigate and clean that up, whatever that looks like. In terms of a process, Mr. Knighton, I don't know if such a scenario has presented itself, but I would value his opinion.
I can't think of one, but I would really be more interested in specifically what type of a disaster are you referring to?
We lose access to Lake Thunderbird as our drinking supply.
Well, there's, people have mentioned there's some provisions entitled eleven that do give a municipality the option, the right to bring a legal action against an entity that pollutes the water supply. I believe that's thirty-seven, twenty-five to twenty-seven. I believe that's 37, 115 to 37. If it's 115, 116 specifically provides for the award of damages to the municipality with regard to or against the opponent's water supply. So if something all along those lines would happen, whether it's facts or evidence that we would show some like we're at water supply, we would be sitting there and requesting whatever damages it is, if that were appropriate to remedy whatever the damage was.
I appreciate that. That's exactly the answer I was looking for.
It'd be part of that too, because that's Midwest City and Dell City would be in the same pot.
Right, would that rise to a level of class action? I guess not, it's probably still different than.
It'll be bigger.
Yeah. Okay, no, I think that would be the answer to my question. Appreciate that.
So if the damages, if you're to estimate, we lost the use of Thunderbird as our source of drinking water?
That would be a significant amount of damages. I don't have any way of being able to predict what that is. There really aren't any cases I was able to locate where that was an issue. But obviously, the issue for us would be whatever the full amount of our damages were, that's what we would receive. And whatever that number is, that's what the statute gives us.
And we do have sampling stations along the Little River so we can be watching water quality. If we see any significant change, we can approach it at that point before it becomes a catastrophic event.
And just those things that we lose sleep on overnight, what that immediate response might look like, might look like technology being delivered to the headworks up by COMCD where filtration and media for whatever those specific contaminants are, we might be able to capture them at the headworks before they make it into our collection system, before they go to the water treatment plant. And I agree, Dell City and Midwest City would be very much interested in the same types of mitigation. And there are some fascinating technologies available that would show up in the back of, you know, some big rigs and trailers and plug and play while long-term mitigation, that gets walked out. And I'm just, I feel fortunate, I sleep well knowing that Mr. Mattingly and his team understand these issues and our water quality needs. We also have some alternatives, some additional capacity potentially through Oklahoma City to help supplement anything we might lose during some mitigation measure.
I appreciate that, yeah. Any opportunity that we can drill and provide some monitoring wells, just all the better. More sampling, more data points we have, I think is better.
There was a group out of Atoka that was trying to sell water from Atoka to Oklahoma City and asked us that we wanted a tap on that, which was interesting. Just an idea. Yes, sir.
So if we're wrong, if they're wrong with their studies, whether the studies are inadequate, you know, or if they're just flat wrong, we have to sue them to pay the damages? And realistically, do we think that we would win that lawsuit?
I can't answer that. I don't do lawsuits. But I think that before we saw, I think with our monitoring that we currently have on Lake Thunderbird, we would see any change in water quality early. And I think we wouldn't wait until it got to a damages point. We'd go to OTA at that point, say, hey, we're seeing some issues and concerns, and we'd try to work it out well before we got to a catastrophic event. So I don't see, I don't know that there would be a situation where we get to a point where we're suing a state agency. I think that we try to address it earlier. Like I said, because of the TMDL, we do have the luxury of having seven years of testing background already. We know where we're at, we know what we've got, we know the fluctuations, we can monitor that. So we could keep an eye on that. And if we, like I said, if we saw certain changes, we would try to work the turnpike with OTA at that point, not wait until we saw a more significant problem. We try to address it early on.
So we monitor Lake Thunderbird now and all the streams going into it. Where are the monitoring points on the strip? Are they before and after the, any major roads? Do we have one to say for Day Blue Creek before it crosses Highway 9 and then after?
Yes. And we do have them, we have them at the city limits, coming in even more on the Little River. We have them, I mean, Jason, sorry. How many sampling stations are there?
We currently have nine permanent stations and a few that are floating. We do some additional monitoring. We're installing one on the Little River at 60th and Franklin later this fall as well. So we'll have both the Little River as it comes into the city limits of basically I-35 and Indian Hills, and we'll have one at 60th and Franklin. And that is stage over how much water, and we're also doing water quality as it relates to nitrogen, phosphorus, total dissolved solids, pH, conductivity, all those other normal water quality parameters.
Have there been any municipalities that have challenged the OTA on the effects on their water?
Nothing I could find.
And I mean, right now, the turnpike goes as close as it's going to be here to Lake Arcadia, Overholster, and Lake Hepner. There's probably more up in the Tulsa area that I'm just not aware of, but.
Which verse of those?
The Kilpatrick goes along Overholster and, don't quote me on this, but I think it's the Kilpatrick goes across, Overholster and Hepner. And then the turnpike is very close to Lake Arcadia.
So there's active monitoring there that's been able to determine that there's been no impact?
I do not know if there's active monitoring on those lakes.
So none of these municipalities have tested to see if there's an effect on their water?
We don't know that.
Oh. So if they were to have an impact on our water, if we were to launch some kind of lawsuit, what's going to, how are we going to be able to argue it wasn't just an increase in population?
Well, I think that because of the monitoring, because the monitoring is done throughout the year, it's not just once a year or, you know, every two years, you'd be able to watch as population growth grows along the turnpike. You'd be able to watch those, and you know, there's some stations I think that would be close enough to the turnpike that because of being along our northern border, that necessarily wouldn't be impacted by development unless we started seeing the large development coming in. So it would just be a matter of like any data collection, you have to look at it, analyze it, and make those type of decisions as you look at it.
So you staff have been analyzing those and watching for any kind of increase?
We monitor those continually. We may not study them, but we do look at them and we can tell you when we see something change. And we would continue to do that and we could increase that and look at it more in depth on those gating stations that would be more directly impacted by the turnpike. And I think that's what makes us very unique to the other municipalities of Oklahoma City and Edmond, either ways the water comes out of water sources, is that they're not monitoring those. But again, I haven't heard anything out of them that says that they've had any changes in their water treatment or any changes. So we'll be able to monitor it and when we see a problem, we'll be able to address it.
If they're not measuring it, then the only way they know is by cancer.
Well, we buy up to 5 million gallons of water a day from the Oklahoma City water supply. And I think that gets tested before it goes into our distribution center. Is that correct, Mr. Mattingly? So we would know if anything showed up in water deliveries from Oklahoma City that come from those waters of water. And they're doing large amounts of testing on the water itself. That proven plant may see increases.
Do we have sand and DEQ violations because the turnpike authority has?
I haven't researched that, sir. I'm sorry for looking for that.
That would kind of give an indicator on how committed they are to filtering and cleaning out the water supplies of municipalities they destroy when they go through them.
We can certainly see if they're already out there and report that back.
Okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Is the testing that we have in place now, will it be sufficient for what is predicted to come, or will we have to implement more testing sites along the way, or what does that look like?
We need to really sit down and look at where those testing locations are with respect to the proposed turnpike system, and then we can make those decisions. It's been a long time since I've dealt with that, so I haven't actually looked at that directly in a few years. We could definitely look at that and that's something we can even consider for future requests, say we'd like four more, four more data stations that we could get so we could have more direct results.
Is that something we'll have to approve as a council?
I'll look back at Jason and ask about the process we went through to identify that site for the one you will be installing in the near future.
The sites that we currently monitor were ones that were called out in the TMDL, and then the monitoring plan that the city of Norman presented to DEQ and was approved. To kind of answer your question too, we also report annually to DEQ all of our testing results, so they are monitoring all of those water quality data as well. As far as adding new sites, the city of Norman can add sites. We have a minimum that we have to maintain because of our TMDL monitoring plan. We can add as many sites as we want, it's a matter of money. And then at a certain point, what resolution do you want and is it a good use of money? So the reason we're moving the one that we did is we had one site that was honestly, it was dry 99% of the time. It was one tiny little trib up in the arm. And we moved it because after six, seven years, it's just dry. And we decided more monitoring on the Little River was actually more important to us, so.
So if this is an expense that we have to incur as we advance, is that something that we could ask OTA to include in upfront?
Absolutely.
And also, is there any mechanism that we have for this type of infrastructure improvement that we could put into the stormwater permits or the floodplain permits that we do have some control over as it pertains to projects this size?
It went ODOT, when ODOT does a Highway 9 widening, Mr. Sturts, what does that look like in terms of our stormwater permitting?
They usually just come in and request a permit and we review it. So they have to supply erosion control plans. That shows us where they're going to put those best management practices. Silt fence, not my favorite, but it's what everybody sees and understands, where they're going to put a check dam to help slow down water flow. And also, then they also have to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan or SWP 3. And that document states when they're going to be doing, all the details of it, interior. And then also, it goes into a lot of detail about what the BMPs are, maintenance of them. And then the permit is actually attached to that. Those are living documents throughout the project, so at any time, inspector shows up, they should see up there that we disturbed this area, we're working over here, we included this, we took that out because it's complete, and it's an active, ongoing document. So there's a lot of detail that goes into that. And so that would be our main control. We look at that and make sure that meets all the minimum criteria of the state and the city. So, because we are MS4 program, so we are required, so we do permitting anything over than one acre. So that would be over an acre, so we would be doing that permit allowance on that. And then as far as the floodplain permitting goes, we're only looking at that section that's being disturbed of the floodplain itself. So when you're looking, let's say the floodplain's a hundred foot wide, they're going to disturb 400 feet of it, that's all we're looking at. We don't start going outside of that and we make sure we're meeting all the regulations of both FEMA and of our own floodplain ordinance. And if it doesn't meet it, we typically won't even take it to committee. So it won't get approved.
So Councilmember Hinkle, I think in that line of thought, in the resolution requesting these things to indicate that we would like to request some additional monitoring wells and between Mr. Sturts, Mr. Mattingly, Jason's team, we could identify where we think we would really get benefit from being able to test water before it gets to the construction zone and coming off of the construction zone where we can gather that data. But yeah, in the grand scheme of a project of this magnitude, the cost of those water turning wells to request beyond budget dust.
So a lot of thinking. I want to take that one step further. Instead of asking them to fund and build them, I would like to build them ourselves so we can start getting our baseline today and then ask them to recoup the cost. Because I don't, I, monitoring wells down the road after this thing is constructed is great, but if we don't know what our baseline is, we don't know if we've exceeded, if we've improved, if we've done anything. So I think for our own peace of mind, setting some baseline, whether it's one per mile along the east-west connector, I'll let you guys use your job.
And what we're talking about are monitoring stations. So these are stream stations, not monitoring wells, good groundwater. This is surface water. It's really what we're looking at because that surface water's what's going to be infiltrating anyways to get down into the water. But yeah, happy to include that in our budget. Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
So in the future, where they've constructed a turnpike and we're actively monitoring all parts of the streams, upstream, downstream, we're catching everything so we can see exactly what their impact is. We see, even if they don't impact our lake to push it over the edge where we can't use it for water on day one, but there is a measurable increase in pollution. In Title 11, no person from partnership or corporation or any of the partners, officers, managers, or employees thereof shall pollute or permit the pollution of the water supply in this valley or any stream on lake or other water reservoir or groundwater offer. So would we then lose our ability to, would an argument be able to be made? And this is probably a question for Mr. Knighton. If we see that measurable increase, that we do have grounds to sue them for damages, could they argue that we permitted the pollution of that water?
Well, I guess what I would be asking first has to do with causation. And the question or the evidence that I would need to look at and try to develop on the front of that is, what's the cause of the pollution?
And so if we can't determine that, then we're not protected?
You're not protected if you can't determine causation regardless of the source of it. That, if we're appointed, you have the burden to prove it's more likely than not that the defendant committed some act of resulting damages. So you'd still have to prove causation regardless of what the source was. That would be our obligation to prove. So that's why on the front end of that question, I would be both involved, what's the cause? What caused the pollution? That type of, we're talking about monitoring and things along those lines. That type of evidence would help you develop what the actual cause was. But in terms of the question that we permitted, my understanding is OTA has the ability to build the turnpike. And it doesn't matter whether he said yes or no. So it would be difficult for the defendant to argue that the city of Norman caused this because we let him build his turnpike. You have a right to do that. What we would be looking at is, what's the cause of the pollution? And if the cause of the pollution was something that we could tie to OTA, that's going to defend it. And that's going to be a legitimate thing, whatever the damages is proved.
But again, our goal is, let's work upfront, let's get some measures in place so that we're not talking about that in the future. Let's get it front of it instead of behind it. And the only way to do that is to be working with them.
So there's a vast sensor array that we got. Let's assume that it does establish the causation. Then we can sue them for the damages that the defendants avoided?
You can sue them for whatever the damage you can prove. I mean, you would be looking at the cost of replacement, cost of remediating whatever the problem is. Not necessarily known specifically, but within the water. We'd be talking about those types of cost measure damages. So yeah, we'd be suing them and you would be looking to recover whatever the cost of remedying whatever the problem that that could cause to be.
Okay, so now this council lives in reality. We know how likely it is that we're going to launch that kind of complicated lawsuit against the turnpike authority if they do have a measurable increase, which the staff will tell us about in pollution to our water supply. Even a measurable increase, as our population grows and we contribute our own pollution to it, eventually it could hit a tipping point if we don't have any better ways to mitigate that if they're giving it a bump ahead, well then we're losing the use of it early. But still, the point remains that what's the, what are the chances that we're actually going to launch this lawsuit if this were to happen?
100%.
If it actually happens, well, all that matters.
100%. But if they screw up, we will sue them. But we cannot sue somebody because we think they're going to do something wrong. Me and Mr. Knighton had this conversation. He sent to me an email. If the city attempts to prohibit OTA from construction of this turnpike, we will get sued. If the city gets sued, this argument under, from the statute 37-115 would be similar to the plaintiff's argument in Pikeoff OTA. OTA will violate some duty or legal obligation at some point in the future. This argument was rejected in Pikeoff OTA without actual evidence of adverse endangerment. This argument was rejected in Pikeoff OTA, and without actual evidence of adverse impact of Lake Thunderbird would be rejected in future litigation. A couple months ago, we decided to go against his, the city attorney's advice, we decided to hold an election against our city charter, and now our taxpayers had to pay $3,000 because we refused to listen. And now if we refuse to listen again, we're going to be the ones expected to pay in losing court, and our taxpayers will lose out again. So that's where I'm at on it.
So, are we going to be able to watch a lawsuit? Do you really honestly think that we're going to be able to direct Mr. Knighton to sue the OTA because one of us has been informed by staff on their own will that there's been an increase in pollution and that they know that it was from?
In terms of water cost of going and oil comes out, you damn right the city will sue and you damn right we will win.
Okay, but if it's less than oil?
If it's a contaminant that jeopardizes the health of our citizens, we can sue and we will win, because then we have an actual reason to sue. We can't sue somebody because they might do something.
I'm not arguing that we wouldn't have a reasonable basis to form a lawsuit. Do you think that this council will actually launch a lawsuit against the turnpike authority? If there's just, even if there was a small increase?
Well, it depends on the definition of small, but if it goes over a limit, what he's doing is he's testing two limits that are in the Clean Water Act.
The smoldering?
Clean Water Act numbers, or another number.
The three or three D list is what, is the impaired water bodies list.
So it can move up and down. Say, say we salt the road, we go out, it's icy, we salt the road, and something moves up and down, whatever the pH moves up and down or something like that, that wouldn't be enough. If it goes over a limit, and it wasn't a spike, darn toot.
So, we have noisy measurements just by the natural cycle of the city and rain, so how easily will it be to identify determinatives, the turnpike because of the pollution?
That's a more difficult question, depends on what parameters you're looking at, because if you're, to your mayor's point, if it's something like salinity, again, that can vary so much, just how wet is it, how dry is it, have we salted the roads, et cetera. With respect to any of the things that we're concerned existing in the TMDL related to water quality, we have such a large data set that it's, we have monthly data for seven to eight years, it gets real easy to see. We have baseline data because we collect like just base flow, we also collect that high flow data, so we can see what those numbers are doing. On top of, I know the Water Resources Board has an ambient trend monitoring network that they've been running since the mid 90s, including Lake Thunderbird, and there's been countless number of studies on Thunderbird, like there is a massive data set available on Thunderbird that we can see these things happening. Now, there's always things that could happen on top of that, but to your point two about what is the chances we could sue and things like that, the reason that the TMDL was even implemented on Lake Thunderbird was because COMCD sued because they saw declining water quality, and that prompted DEQ to start, to start the entire TMDL process that led us to having to do more monitoring and implement these things to start trying to improve water quality in the watershed. So it has happened.
How much of an increase was that?
Whenever they sued, I honestly don't know the answer to that. I do know that the decrease for the TMDL is a 30%, give or take, depending on what exact parameter.
What's the singular deviation of these measurements that we would be comparing with what you do?
That varies by parameter, because your detection limits vary dramatically depending on what parameter you're talking about.
So our argument, our argument in court would come down to a probability of this measurement being higher.
I can't begin to give you legal advice on how that would work. I can speculate, but I'm not going to do you any good there.
So now my question is back to, how are we going to identify that pollution has increased on, by the turnpike? And if we can't measure this, we can't identify that.
The one thing we are certain of at this point is that turnpike is going to be built, and all those conversations and data points, we can either participate with them to get out data that you seek or not, and if we do not participate, they won't be required to develop additional monitoring stations, et cetera. Those will come at our request, including things like frontage roads. For the turnpike to operate, they don't need frontage roads, they'd be happy to build the turnpike without frontage roads. What does that do to our future ability to move around Norman? We really need some things like that to make sure we haven't just cut off future development opportunities within the 48s and apply more pressure outside the 48s. So, the one thing that I would say is a certainty is that they're going to build that infrastructure. It's going to happen.
Well, this doesn't de- legitimize any of my questions, but to that frontage road, Title 69-1706B, if the authority shall find it necessary to change the location of any portion of any state or county highway or street of a municipality, it shall cause the same to be reconstructed in substantially the same type and in good condition as the original highway. So when they offer to build this, these frontage roads, it's not really a kindness, that's a legal obligation, and to think that we're being able to get these benefits, these kindnesses by coming to the table is not only rolling over and giving in, but it's giving them cap fare too.
Well, I would say, based on that reading, and I'll look for Mr. Knighton to correct me, that would indicate if they disturbed Indian Hills as it currently exists, they would be required to replace Indian Hills. They're talking about adding two additional lanes to the other side of the turnpike that we believe ensure the opportunity to develop in between the 48s on the north side of the turnpike. And that's a request they can ignore and not build those frontage roads to the north sides. The property owners on the north side of the turnpike would be limited in ingress egress to those development opportunities. So, I agree with that statement that if they, they could not cause us to lose what we already have, they would have to repair and restore everything to its current condition at least. And the question is, do we want more than that? And if we want more than that, do we need to make that request prior to the 60% design completion, or we won't get it?
Are they replacing all of the Indian Hills that they'll be disturbing, east of 48, northeast and west of 48, northwest?
Yeah, as that map indicates, somewhere out there around 48 east, when it dips down, it'll pull far enough away from Indian Hills where we don't think they'll disturb it at all.
How far away?
Again, this section isn't designed, this may not look anything like this, and you know, because this is where they're trying to determine where the south extension turnpike will turn and go south. So until they have that, or really in this area, or this is just, best guess.
Yeah, so it's going to change slightly here, and once they get further along and they get that set, they'll start working on those plans and we could be involved in that.
Well, then isn't the utility of this conversation kind of limited? If we don't even know what they're building?
Well, I think that we are setting the general parameters, we're saying that they're agreeing that they will put the interchanges, the access at these locations, they're saying that they're going to get all the roads to go through, they're saying that they'll build the frontage road from 60th to 48, they're agreeing to tip the multimodal trails, we're not saying the exact design, and in this area, those number of parameters we're discussing are much less, because at this point you don't have the frontage roads, and there's only a couple of access points on this section of Norman. So I think that, and then the one of the, in a moment, we've got some items that we were going to include in the resolution that we could bring forward to you, but one of the items is there, is that we'll redo this for the south extension turnpike, so there'll be another agreement to come back to council, and we'd set all these parameters for that north-south. So there were kind of guaranteeing that we're going to be back, that we're going to be work, that they're going to reach out to us to work on that section.
I'm a little concerned with timing and AIM Norman Steering Committee, I'm curious, do they, have they seen phase one?
So, the Transportation Subcommittee actually has chosen to include this design in there, so they actually showed this, and it's all being considered as part of the transportation system, and everybody is aware of it, that everybody, my understanding is, that they basically are knowing that the south may move, but that, yeah, this has been discussed in AIM meetings.
And this question maybe for Jane, when do we finish AIM, like when are our consultants done, when do we see that plan?
Well, it's still up in the air, we've got, the Steering Committee is actually asking for possibly one, maybe two more meetings to get all the information from the subcommittees forward, so I'm literally looking at December possibly.
Okay, so that means just even if phase one probably won't even be completed by then, but could change. I'm just wondering about the flexibility of the document that's printed before us and what they may suggest around like an interchange that we looked at in the previous slide, but they know that that particular style is coming and will have ideas for us about what to donate.
Yes, and I have not been to the Transportation Subcommittee meetings, but I do know that we have staff that have been there, and I do know that the consultants have talked about adding additional language in the document to acknowledge this as it comes forward and having recommendations for you as changes do come forward and the recommendations that you might be looking at.
But if we were to, to work with the OTA at this point, say this is, we all agree to this, you could take that to the AIM Committee, and they would have that, and they can incorporate that now and start, we know here's the interchanges, we know the basic layout, except for the solar area that may shift, and they can start laying some of that out, especially, you know, basically from 24th northeast back to 60th. So this would be information that we could, if a resolution was passed that kind of outlined what we're saying here, then it goes straight to the AIM Committee and start getting that incorporated into the document.
And then, when do you think we'll be back to talk about, like, when do you think we're going to update about this?
Well, depending on council's actions concerning a resolution, I think we would propose to update you upon completion and circulation of the 60% design drawings in the fall of 2024, and by that time they're relatively firm as to what it is we should anticipate being built in Norman. When it comes to that south extension turnpike, when it's in blue on the map, they haven't started, it's a few years down the road, it'll be a while before that conversation reaches this level of interaction with the authority, but we'd love to update council on 60% completion and then show you final design mid 2025 before any construction begins, and that will help us identify mitigation measures for, you know, traffic that we're going to address at each one of those intersections.
We could also update you on studies as well.
Would it be fair to say that that's projection, and things are always in a projection over 20 years are going to change somewhat?
Absolutely.
They definitely have, it's, I guarantee you, that 2025 plan has changed a lot.
And to go?
Oh, you've done.
Okay, thank you.
And just to go with what was just said, for the AIM Committee and everything else, what are the chances we could have some small group meetings, like we do with the arena, with OTA prior to the 60% plan coming out?
We could certainly ask OTA how their feelings would be about that.
Because I'd love to get with my constituents, I'm about to have the town hall before too long, I would love to get their concerns, like what they would like to see, and then be able to sit down with OTA in a small group setting and discuss this, and then have the, what we can send to AIM, and what we can send to Transportation Committee, and the more that we all work on this together now, the more we can ensure that when it happens, as Mr. Powell said, it is happening, so when this does happen, we can make sure that it happens to the very, very best of our abilities and for the best of the citizens. So yeah, we could do some kind of small group sessions with OTA, if we could reach out to them, I would greatly appreciate it.
So, the future phase, the second part, the blue, we don't know the current alignment update, where it might be, but we might know in early 2025, 60% plans will be done for the blue?
Not for the blue, so that's really, you've got multiple phases, you've got the phase between 24th northwest and 24th northeast, then you've got the blue, then you've got the yellow at the top. They're going to come in phases, and that's just kind of the start, and we're going to start seeing more plans and more production coming out, but you know, as I stated, they're planning by the end of 2030 to have the main line open to traffic all the way through to I-40. So when you look at that, that's the blue, the yellow, and everything. Now, I think that may be a little ambitious, we'll see, but that's, but the first that we've started seeing would probably be that next phase going continuing, I don't know exactly where it's going to go to, but I've heard that it may go to Sinner or 12, they keep saying Sinner, they use up on city names, drives me nuts, and then maybe continue on, they're probably going to go to that line shown on here with the next section. Part of that is also dictated because there's different consultants working in different areas, so they don't, you know, try and coordinate two sets of plans that have, that people just want to cut it off or you can't easily, but those are all things that we can certainly work on.
So the south part though, from this connecting interchange, south to Highway 9, doesn't exist yet, we don't know?
They don't know the alignment, that's what they're doing now, they're studying what's going to be the best alignment to go south, and they didn't give us a timeframe on that, but it's not far future, it's closer to near future, but that's what they're studying now, and then they'll start to get that design as well as the design in blue on the East-West Connector.
Are they working with city staff or property owners to determine that?
They have not reached out to staff.
Because the problem with the initial rollout of this was that they just published a map that showed an alignment, and people then saw, oh, my property's in that alignment. I never, you know, how much did the city know about this beforehand? They never contacted me to see what I thought about this. So instead of working with the property owners, instead of working with the city, they just published a map of where it was going to go, and that certainly inflamed everyone immediately to be opposed to it, and now we have hundreds of people, property owners, who now are sitting in limbo not knowing, they think they're safe right now because of the initial alignment that was put out, we're just outside of it, but now they're in limbo not knowing if they might end up being inside of it, you know? And maybe we might not even know for another year or two or longer?
Yeah, like, again, they think it's a timeframe, but I think that's why they do it quickly, they want to help erase that uncertainty, I think, but as far as their process for determining it, I, we can certainly mention to them that trying to work with the community may be good if we can.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the hard part, is that we want us to work together, affirm that we're working together when they've literally done nothing to work with us at all for however long they've been developing this, and then they just throw it out there, make everyone upset, people thinking they're losing their homes, their properties that they've owned, multi-generational, and now they want us to come to the table and agree to do some stuff and tell them how thankful we are for them to bring this to our town. And I've yet to still see a case made for how this is good for Norman in any way. Anybody that would love to explain that to me, how is this good for Norman? How is diverting traffic around Norman and all of our businesses on I-35 good for sales tax? How is developing all this rural area and having to widen every section line road to four lanes at $10 million a mile, how is that good for the City of Norman? If growth paid for itself, we've doubled in size since I was born, Norman would be completely solvent right now if growth just paid for itself as we're led to believe by certain people in our community. It just isn't true, and we end up having to do voter bonds and go into debt to try to maintain the infrastructure we have, and so I'm just, again, apprehensive about that, the effort of working with them when it's been shown from day one that they have made no effort at all to work with us in our community. community on this and we're still sitting in limbo. Hundreds of our residents are sitting in limbo not knowing what's going to happen, if their properties are going to be in the way of this. And so, I, I would love to have more clarity, more certainty on what they're doing moving forward. I don't just want to, the same thing repeated where when they figure it out, they're going to publish a map of a route and then we have the same thing again. We have a bunch of people now saying, oh, my house is now in this, in the way of this. So, some people might be saved, but then a whole new group of people are going to be experiencing the same thing. So, that continues to be my concern with them and the stories we've seen and read and heard about from other communities that have, that the turnpike has come through hasn't given me a lot of hope in the prospect of working with them. You know, so, I want to make sure that that second phase for sure, if this first phase is happening, if every legal option has been explored and a resolution has been made in the courts that says this first part is for sure happening, the second part isn't for sure happening, as far as we know, right?
I believe the second part is happening, it's only a matter of that alignment. It is in the $5 billion bond package. Every blue line, yellow line, orange line you saw has been approved by the State Supreme Court to happen, along with the funding. So, the only thing left to decide is exactly where that north-south line will be, but it has been approved by the State Supreme Court to go forward also.
Well, I do want to make sure again that there's no surprise about any future alignment, that they are working with the city staff. And if they're not, then I won't know about it because I'm not, I just don't feel real agreeable with them and the way they've done things always and how they continue to do things in that regard.
I'm just going to ask if the north, north-south alignment is something we could maybe include in a resolution in terms of where my preference would be? I don't know what my preference would be, it's, it's zero, obviously, but if we were to have to give an answer, I'd look to give the answer we want, not the one they want.
Potentially, I'm just thinking of ways to verbalize that. And it could be in such a manner that minimizes the number of rooftops or, you know, what, what would be Council's goal and how can we capture that in writing to say, here's what we would like you to take into consideration in that alignment? And are there degrees of, you know, 100 feet this way or 100 feet that way that result in fewer rooftops?
Absolutely, it's not just rooftops, it approximates the water, you know, water quality. You've got that line of rose rocks which only occurs at one place in the United States and it's right there, so dodging that, but I can't say that that is worth more than somebody's home or somebody's home is worth more than the entire city's drinking water. I can't, I can't really do that calculus in my head, so I, you know, I'd love to study that problem on its own, if that's possible.
Okay, I just want to, like, whatever studies you have to update us on, we'd love them. And then for AM Norman, subcommittees like stormwater and transportation, I would really, really love to see them be able to talk to OTA about these issues. You know, those are where the experts are residing, those subcommittees, I'd really like to hear from them with the reference in the resolution. Because as I understood it, the first resolution that we're considering is east-west and then the second would be north-south.
Yeah, the first, the first resolution identifies those infrastructure components, frontage roads, green infrastructure, multimodal pathways, those types of things. We would say in the north-south, we want, it's harder to define because we don't know the alignment, we don't know what those impacts are, so it's harder to identify what the mitigation might be.
But then, subcommittees would have, like, best practices and would have a recommendation maybe for OTA, you might consider doing this particular route over this one because of X, Y, Z.
Yeah, even connectivity to existing trail systems, et cetera, for a multimodal pathway. So.
And I think that's one of the considerations, like on the multimodal path, is where we'll terminate. There's at some point, we're going to want to tie something north-south that's going to get us from the north side of town to the south side of town, it's eventually going to get us to St. Louis Draper and all that. You know, we've done a great job along Highway 9, but where do we start going north? Maybe that's something that, that we'd be considering as we start talking about the multimodal pathway. So, just to kind of go over some of the resolution, we've got some sample language that we've been kind of bouncing around a little bit in-house, but they've requested a resolution to provide from the city of Norman, just so they've got the commitment, basically indicating cooperation in the process. The things that we want to include in there is requests from the city of Norman. We've got a segment in there regarding water quality and to make sure that they coordinate with the COMCD. We think they're a great partner. Again, the green infrastructure, protect water quality, the location of all the future interchanges are laid out clearly so that those, we'll know where those are going to be. The two-way frontage, the one-way, two-lane, two-lane, one-way frontage roads. And also, we're going to ask them to maybe help us out a little bit on 36 Northwest, see if we can get a little assistance there. And then the multimodal, multimodal trail on the south side of the turnpike.
And based on this evening's conversation, language that will address monitoring stations at points of interest, and we want to go fast. If they can go fast, I mean, they have a construction budget approved, if they can go fast, great. Our team could indicate where and what those monitoring stations look like, we'll make sure that language is included also for your consideration.
And could we also get supervisory rights to that so Jason can check their setup?
Oh, I would think, absolutely.
By the way, just so everybody knows, Jason actually worked with the Water Resources Board and basically set up all of our gauging stations and monitoring stations we currently have and managed that until he came here to the city of Norman. So, he's very familiar with that and got a strong background in it, of course.
The 36th Avenue, does that even franken to more city limits?
Yeah, our goal is to go as far north and as far south of the city. We're planning for that, we have seen what we can do. There are some options we have and some ways we may be able to participate, maybe we put the construction on them, but we just participate, maybe we just say, why don't you just help us and build more? We don't know. That's kind of one of the things that we bring to Council for final discussion.
We've already acquired the right of way or almost there, I guess.
Correct, and all the utilities are relocated.
So, it's ready to do it?
Correct.
And we're planning to do, to kind of set it franken first?
That's what we call Phase One, but part of the reason for that right now is that we don't know exactly what the limits of what the turnpike will take out of our 36 project Phase Two, so it's hard to do anything. We're waiting to get that information and get concrete so that we can say, okay, now go back to a few changes and now we have plans to construct the rest of it. But until we know where their limits are, we're kind of, we're going to wait and see on those plans. But then we do have Phase Three that goes from the north edge of what we think they'll be doing to city limits. So, we'd just like to...
Yeah, I would request they do the whole thing, yeah, as much of it as possible. And again, this, this resolution's just for the first part?
Right, and there's language in there that actually says that, that's written in there. And then also, you know, they just kind of, we, I think we've got in there that they'll give us review of documents and that we'll share documents with them back. For example, they need our design at 36 Northwest to know what to do at that, that location. They need to know what our inlet design is, that we will take over. They want to build our style of inlet to make sure that it meets our criteria. So, there's some things, also the plating, if you remember, a lot of that, those plats along the proposed turnpike have been preliminary plated and we told them we'd share those with them so that they could see that. I mean, it's open record information we could get at the courthouse tomorrow. But, you know, a little bit of sharing, a little bit of ability to be able to get some cooperation.
I would just say to the, the affirmation of a partnership is difficult because I don't feel like this is a partnership at all. Well, I don't feel like it, this is being forced upon us whether we like it or not, apparently. And has been from day one, so I don't know what type of partnership that is other than us asking them to do stuff, but it's not a partnership, they haven't been a partner to us in my observation and experience. And it's not even cooperation where we have to apparently allow this and there's nothing we can do. I'm still not convinced there's nothing that can be done, but it does not feel like any partnership I've ever been familiar with before. So, I'm not sure about affirming a partnership when there isn't one and they've never really made any attempt to have one of this. I don't know, I want to ask for this stuff to be done, if it's going to have to be done, but I don't, it's not willing. It's, you know, it's against my will.
We appreciate the size of the pill.
You know, and my, my concerns, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but if we don't have this agreement, do we lose 24th Avenue Northeast as an interchange and we only get 12th? And then we lose 48th, so we only get 60th, 12th and 120th. And now, you know, that really cuts down on the ability to, to get those interchanges in, which will help get people to flow into Norman and out of Norman. Or do we start losing the improved frontage roads and we get to a frontage road that isn't that good, that doesn't benefit Norman the way that it could on OTA funding? Or do we start losing some of the additional stormwater initiatives that we can request and work through?
And we also need to think about, you know, ambulance accessible sides of the turnpike, you know, fire truck response and those things. So, I mean, it is important for me to have a seat at the table to indicate why these intersections and underpasses of our local roads are so important. If you're on the wrong side of the street and the ambulance has got to go four city miles to flip a U-turn around a turnpike interchange to come back to the house, that means a lot, 60th Street.
Well, I agree that we have to plan for things that may happen and be prepared for it and try to get the best out of something we can, even if we don't want it or personally support it. So, I, I do understand what the staff is asking and I appreciate what you're putting together, but yes, it is a very big pill to swallow, in my opinion.
They're wanting us to put together a resolution to invite them to make the turnpike, to, is that basically what's?
No, the, the, the turnpike is going. So, what we're doing is we're coming and saying, we would like these add-ons.
All right, let's, let's address the futility argument for a second. That just means that we're suspending all critical judgment of this project, thinking that the outcome is already pretty determined. That means that it doesn't matter what, the impact, the potential impact could be to our water quality, doesn't mean that, you know, taking into consideration any effectual part of this project because we already assume that it's going to be constructed. So, why are we even having half these conversations on, on the impact of wetlands and, you know, leaving up to their goodwill of the OTA to build as exactly what we want if we come to the table and are submissive? How many times has that succeeded in the past with the Turnpike Authority? You haven't looked. How did HARA turn out?
We, we did have a conversation with the Mayor of HARA and their city administrator. And initially, when the turnpike approached nearing 60% design drawings, the city of HARA said, we're not going to have that conversation with you. The turnpike proceeded and the next iteration of council members said, we need to put sewer and water on the other side of the turnpike. They called the turnpike and asked, would you guys put in these sewer and water pipes for us so we can provide service to the other side of the turnpike? And the answer was, if we'd have known that at 60% design drawings, we would have been happy to, we will allow you to bore under. So, the city of HARA was hit with a $750,000 expense that would have been done at the OTA's expense when it was on paper before it got to 60%. So, that's the most recent and probably the closest impact and the Mayor of HARA said, I encourage you to have these conversations early and often because the impacts, I mean, it's, that turnpike goes in, it'll be all of our lifetimes when that infrastructure is there. And the more we can forecast what we're going to need on both sides of that infrastructure, the better it will be for generations to come that won't have to fund locally what those improvements may look like.
So, we can give them our requests while also demanding accountability, right?
I would absolutely agree with that.
So, an alternate resolution, most of you have it in front of you, it's not unreasonable, it doesn't say they shall not construct this turnpike, it's demanding, there's a set of expectations for the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, environmental impact assessments, alternative routes, identify alternative routes, which they haven't done. mitigation measures to minimize adverse effects on the watershed and areas of concern and all roads traversing it. And that they must engage meaningful consultation with the city of Norman, environmental experts and the public to ensure transparency and community involvement and decision, in the decision-making process. These are all things that, no, they haven't done. These are all simple, basic courtesies that they haven't done. If we're sitting here thinking that, oh, if we give in, then they'll give us the additional courtesy of redesigning their turnpike to our, our desires, that's not going to happen. We can demand that they just do basic stuff to ensure that we're not going to have any adverse effects to the watershed or to any of the water within city limits. And it's not going to have a single effect on whether or not they take into account the things that we request because they're, they'd do it or they wouldn't. And, you know, it's, now all these secret meetings that staff has without, because they're secret meetings where they don't tell anybody on council, I think even Mr. Mayor's had some meetings with the OTA?
I had one very first week or something when I was in office.
Okay. Well, knowing that Council is incredibly interested in this, this process, in this, in this project and staff doesn't think to inform Council that they're going to be having these talks with the OTA, maybe one of them wants to attend with those talks? In fact, we don't hear about it until today. Why is that?
I would say very usual and customary in the working process between members of staff of lots of different organizations and agencies before it goes to bodies for approval. These are all considered working documents and our ability to present them to Council as quickly as possible, recognizing the level of interest and the impact this project has on our community going forward are top priority. Very challenging to say, well, which two council members get to go negotiate on behalf of the city of Norman if two council members aren't on the same page or don't necessarily reflect the will of the body? And that's the challenge, the will of the body is only determined when you're all together. So, our ability to get data before the body, take your direction and return, that's kind of how the process works. It would be very difficult to not violate the Open Meetings Act and still have council members participate. I don't know how you would choose among yourselves.
Participate versus attend? And so, Council isn't allowed to attend these meetings, but we're being asked to pass a resolution about how excited and happy we are about the turnpike?
There is no action set for this evening, it's for discussion and direction for us to modify that document as this Council sees fit. So, we wanted to make sure the document we brought to you has your input and reflected the will of the body. So, yeah, no action tonight, we're taking notes and we hope to incorporate Council's feedback into the final document that you would address at a future meeting.
So, the will of people, the will of the body, we represent people of the city. Every council member should keep that in mind when considering what to do about this resolution and any accountability we can hold them to with a different resolution. Does the city want it, what does the city want? Do they want accountability, do they want the turnpike at all? Which is the right thing to do? If we just assume that they're going to kill this turnpike and suspend any critical judgment of them centered around that, well, then we're betraying the people that elected us into office. Every single one of us has an obligation to fulfill the will of the people that we represent. Every single one of us has an obligation to fulfill the will of the people we represent. And this is insane. It's insane that they would ask us to do this. But we can still demand accountability and still have just as much negotiation power as we did if we submit to them. And so, you know, that's the choice that people need to make. Are they going to suspend their judgment, ignore any potential effects on our bodies' Are we going to ignore the fact that 2,000 people are going to lose their homes? Which is the most in U.S. history for any road project. There's never been this large number of homes and this many people displaced. 5% of the city of Norman. And we don't even have the courage to say we want, we demand these tests, we demand engagement with our people. How can we sit here and say that we're representing anybody if we're just putting our decision around this assumed futility in favor of the OTA? So I guess it's good for now.
In regards to this resolution, it is not undoing any previous council's resolution. This would just be saying that we want to see X, Y, and Z with green infrastructure. Those multi-modal paths, all that, correct?
Correct.
And then, I am curious, what is the accountability? And like, if they're asking us to do a resolution for them, what is the accountability in this process?
Well, our ability to monitor 60% design drawings, 100% design drawings. And then, as we're monitoring, because of all the stormwater permits that we would have tied up along this project corridor, we will be monitoring that construction project from the first turn of the shovel until traffic begins to flow. And our ability to say, "We have a stormwater quality violation. This needs to be addressed immediately." We have that conversation with the development community in Norman regularly. We do that often and we've got a great track record of doing it to ensure our water quality stays safe.
What happens if we butt heads with OTA over some of these details? Where does this resolution put us in position for, you know, them being more open?
I would say if council considers a resolution, it provides you a seat at the table to be engaged in regular dialogue. If we opt not to participate with a resolution in these requests, they will do what they choose to do and we can yell. And I don't even know if there's legal action if they didn't even follow their own design standards in that situation. So, once the state Supreme Court says, "Go forth and build it," there's not a lot of room for appeal or, I mean, we could protest if we witness DEQ violations that we see. And we have staff members with expertise who would recognize those kinds of violations. And we can raise issues like that along the way. So our accountability requires our participation, observation, and reporting back to council what we see often.
Well, now, part of that's not necessarily true, is it, Mr. Bob?
Describe which piece.
The part where Supreme Court's giving them full range to push the turnpike through the city.
That is my understanding, what the turnpike authorized. And unless Mr. Knight has some insight as to where there are windows or challenge points to that project going forward, I am aware.
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, the case that got filed before the Supreme Court, the order to issuing the follows, Supreme Court essentially said, "You're the sole body to get to make the determination as to whether this project goes through or not." And they made the determination itself. And that's, for our purposes, there really isn't anybody else for us to appeal to. The Oklahoma Supreme Court is the Supreme Court of Oklahoma and they get to make that determination and they've made it. We were parties to that litigation or there were other entities that filed protests. So from judicial perspective, people had had their opportunity to voice their objections before the Supreme Court with regard to this particular project. And the Supreme Court has issued a ruling that says OTA can proceed with issuing the debt and building the turnpike. A lot of the arguments that I hear being made were made during that litigation. And there's the concept of either issue a claim or two, which essentially is you have the opportunity to raise a particular issue before court, and you did, or you chose not to. Once there's a final decision, it settles any of those claims that were either raised or that could have been raised. So again, a number of these filed protests, obviously there was an extended timeframe with regard to the interest of that decision, but once it's been issued, that pretty is the end of the line with regard to litigation in terms of whether or not the turnpike can be built. Now, there may be some questions with regard to actual implementation. I mean, if we thought that something was being done negatively or as the city manager talked about, if there were other violations, DEQ, clean water, and so forth. Those issues have not been litigated and you might be able to bring those up. But again, you would have to wait until those events occur.
No person, firm, partnership, or corporation, or any of the partners, officers, managers, or employees that have chucked pollution or committed pollution of the water supply in the municipality or any stream pond, stream pond, spring, lake, or other water reservoir or groundwater offered, which is used or which is being held for use as a water supply by the municipality. That sounds like we do have the authority to protect our water supply.
The opposite words in that statute for me are polluted or allowed to pollute. So I would be looking for evidence today that someone has polluted the water or allowed the water to be polluted. And I don't know any evidence that shows that.
So, can you say that again? You're relying on having evidence today polluted using a, by a turnpike that hasn't been built yet?
That's correct. The opposite language is polluted or not polluted. So I don't know any evidence that someone has either polluted like thunderbird or allowed someone.
Well, and there's a huge body of evidence showing that interstates, highways source pollution to the environment around them.
That language in that statute, to me, requires evidence today that someone has either polluted or allowed to be polluted in that resolution. And there is no such evidence. It goes back to, and I believe there's some language from the court in one of those opinions and talks about the court refusal to make a determination based on what someone might be. I suppose there is a possibility that someone will pollute like thunderbird. We don't get to move forward with regard to requesting relief under that provision until we have evidence that that has occurred. Currently, there is no evidence that that has occurred.
So we have no rights to protect our water supply?
I don't think I said that. I think what I said is that particular statute requires an act. Someone either polluted or allowed to be polluted. Currently, there is no evidence that that has occurred. So if we're talking about that particular statute, as we sit here today, there's no basis for us to go sue anybody to request damages under 37,016 as a result of something that's been done to the thunderbird. That evidence doesn't exist.
So, when going back to considering whether or not we'll ever be able to sue the OTA for their polluting our water supply, I argue we would not. There would be nothing that we could do to correct by that situation. We would be in a situation if we can't fix, but we have, we do have the power to try to at least mitigate it by requiring they perform, or it's passing a resolution strongly insisting that they perform adequate environmental studies to certain, that's reviewed by us and ideally other entities, engagement with the public. We as the council can't even go in there and talk to them in any of these meetings. So, I was talking with the mayor of Midwest City earlier today, explaining to him the resolution. And, you know, he's in agreement with our protection of the water supply. I'm waiting on Dell City Mayor to contact me back. But, you know, the language of this resolution that I've proposed is subject to change a little bit because Midwest City Mayor wants to make this a joint resolution. I'm sending it to his staff right now to de-review and is willing to join with us in a joint resolution, encouraging and forcing these asks that we have of the OTA.
By what authority do you ask another town to be able to do a joint resolution?
I can call the mayor of Midwest City if I want to call the mayor of Midwest City.
Sure. But if you're sitting down there making joint resolutions without the rest of us coming in and saying, "We'd like to partner with Midwest City and do that."
It's a proposed resolution. I have full authority to write a proposed resolution that I bring in front of this council.
Mind your tone, please.
Sorry.
You have, you write any resolution you want. It takes all of us working together to be able to make things work right.
It takes five of us to do the right thing.
That's correct.
Only five.
Okay. Raise your elbows up. Are you done, sir? Because there's another question.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I actually just want to speak to Councilmember Nash's comments here. First, I want to say, you know, I've got to commend him and Dr. Serato, whoever else put their fingerprints on this because it's clear, you put a lot of work into it, put a lot of thought into it. I think there's a lot of good content in there. But the things it doesn't have are the things on the screen. The things on the screen that it doesn't have, some of the things are in here. So, to me, I think the balance lies somewhere in the middle. It's not a decision, is this resolution or is that a resolution? It's a marriage of the two somehow. And so if I was to give the staff any kind of direction, it would be to workshop both resolutions, see what, you know, the good content you can pull out of this one that marries up what we're trying to accomplish and try to check the new boxes possible.
And with any such document, when it becomes agendized, it's before council, I could even be amended from the floor? Again. So it's not final until council says it's final. So what we would have, we would add to that list those additional monitoring stations we got from this evening's conversation. And staff will jump into that resolution and bring you hopefully the best of both worlds.
And part of the other thing too, I think, and I'll get to you in a second, is that is the roles between council and staff. Council looks at large units. We don't look at each nut and bolt that goes in. That's staff to be able to say that. There are a lot of things that staff need to talk about to their fellow peer. That's redundant. But anyway, to their peer to be able to make these things happen. That's what we're telling them now. We would like this, whether at combination, however, what's on the board, however. That's what our job is, the 30,000-foot level. And then make sure that that works when you guys come back with an answer. For us to figure out where to put the MPDES monitors and all the rest of that is way out of our league. Who can do that? Yes, sir.
To Councilmember Peacock's point, I would like to see both the proposed resolution on the screen and the draft that Councilmember Nash put together combined into one.
Happy to do that. I think we've got the capabilities now.
Accountability as well as what is presented on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Can we also, to the councilman's point, if we're going to leave the partnership language in there, can we seek some sort of definition of what that partnership looks like between the city of Norman and the OTA? Because it seems very quid pro quo after the fact right now.
And there were good contracts, there's a definition of terms.
Yeah, and I think there's a resolution form and format that could provide that glossary component.
And I understand the way that they operate and the way that they've operated in the past. And if that's the way that we have to adhere moving forward, then so be it. But I've never been in a contract situation where, you know, you either tell me you love me or you get nothing kind of thing. So that would, I would like just any kind of firm language around that to show what a partnership really looks like between us and them, beyond us doing a resolution to invite them into our city to, against the will of our people.
Yes, sir.
Also for a hybrid, one thing I did like was this reiteration that this wasn't something we wanted. Is it possible to say that we are coming to the table, that acknowledge that the people at the table do not want this thing, but we are dealing with it and so X, Y, and Z is what we want out of this?
Well, and the thing that, I don't know if we know when we talk about the will of the people. I don't know if we've ever surveyed that scenario. I hear from business owners and community members who think this is going to be a wonderful thing. Council took an action. We adopted a resolution that said, "We don't want you," and we brought litigation against the process. That was, we got our day at court. We had that. Not being successful in that, there's absolutely no harm in us identifying in that resolution how we got here. And I think when we talk about the will of the people, that's kind of an interesting question. It would be interesting to know what the, if we were to do a survey to figure out what other thing...
The will of the councils, what counts.
Yeah, I was going to say, I feel like most of us have gotten, even if there are people that are supportive, I feel like there are many more people, especially those impacted by potentially losing their homes that are not.
Oh, no doubt about it.
We're also in a weird position of trying to create more housing, some of it affordable, and here we are, losing potentially up to 600 group tops, potentially. So I would like to just say how we got here and that in entering this, like, you know, this is where we're at, this is what we're in good faith trying to procure.
That is, I think, a brilliant way to couch that conversation. We are here in good faith for the best interest of Norman residents.
Yes.
I'm sorry, confirm that, did she say?
She spoke.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You got anything else? Do you have anything else for us, sir?
We would like to, we need to get this submitted before the subsequent plans are complete. We would like to try to bring the resolution back on the 13th so that you can have time to consider if there's more change necessary or more items that we need to include. I think it's the 27th. And I think if we wait until the first meeting in September, we may have missed our window of opportunity. So we'll want to bring something to you at that meeting and we'll do this presentation and then we'll have a new resolution that will be attached to that and then we can take councils...
If it needs to be a resolution instead of a letter or...
It's a resolution.
Yeah, they have indicated that the resolution is the official document.
And they do have, they are getting resolutions from all the communities that are impacted. So it's not just Norman, I'm just saying, let us out. I'm understanding some of the communities have already done it. Cleveland County is currently working on theirs too, so.
Yep, council, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.